At six o'clock and we'll call the meeting to order. Um, we have everybody here but, um, all right.
Have I heard anything at this point?
So I'm assuming they'll be coming. Um, additions to the agenda?
Try to start.
I didn't see any.
Wow. Can't promise everything.
Okay, um, and then, uh, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Cheryl. And a second, a second by Kala. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Okay. We are right away to approve and correct minutes from the May 5th, 2015 regular meeting. Anybody see any corrections or additions? I have a motion by Lou. The second by Cheryl.
That would happen.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Okay, then we are financial reports. Anybody have any comments, corrections? See our building trust fund is still pretty, our building fund is still pretty full.
Yeah, when we, yeah, when we go through that, um, we look at the revised budget, you'll see that it's kind of went down a little bit because the state controls that debt service piece, so they'll adjust it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the treasure report? I have a motion by ID. I'll make, I'll make the second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Okay, audit approval of bills. These are additional bills for April 2015 and May of 2015 and Cheryl.
I was able to go ahead and check the bills except, I didn't see anything out of the ordinary, um, anything I had questions on was easily explained, um, I, I would want to move over.
Okay, and a motion by Cheryl to approve the bills for, you guys mind if we do one and two together in one motion? Okay, approve, uh, one and two. We have a, we have a second by Kala. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Okay, we are now on a consent agenda. Review and consider authorization, uh, authorizing the following 2015, 1415 school year career increments. Uh, 20 years, Michelle Anderson, 20 years, Dana Engel, uh, 20 years, Henry Stevens, 25 years, Jeanie Moran, and 30 years, Kim Go Branson.
This is contractual. I would recommend we.
So I'll make a motion to approve. Second by Kala.
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Okay, um, we are now on business item number one. Um, with all our business items, um, we have open public comments, so, uh, we will go through them, talk about them, but there's a chance for anybody in the public to comment on the business items if you would like. Um, probably just state your name and make your comment so people know who you are. Um, anybody that would likely have a microphone near so possibly you know. Okay, um, we have number one review, the first reading of the revised 2015 budget and Bobby had it in our packet.
I did have that in my packet, so if you could pull it out, I'll just pull up the pieces to explain a few change or differences. Um, if you take a look at it, um, as far as the revenue, those are the first two columns. Expenditures are the second two columns. Ones are adopted, the first column, and then the second column is the revised, okay, because we're finishing up the year. So if you take a look at the general fund, as far as revenue, we were looking at eight million, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars in sum. Uh, we revised it to nine million, one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and fifty-six. Now, the reason for that is that before we did the, uh, actual adopted, um, budget for that, for our revenue, we didn't have project lead the way, there was money that was brought into the district from the community membership project lead the way, uh, we had got a grant from the WCD, which wasn't in there yet. Uh, integration dollars was not in that budget. Uh, special advantage got paid through, for, through the federal dollars, through the WCD. That wasn't in there. Um, there was some teacher development dollars that the state put into our general fund. That was not yet in there and then our athletic accounts, the usage and the gates was up and was more than what we had projected. So that in itself came to about, um, a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, so you could take that off and when we get to the revised expenditures, those same items that came in also go up. So you'll notice that we had more expenditures, but it's because we had more revenue, which was specific to specific purposes. All right, so that's what the difference between those two, um, pieces are. As far as the food service, uh, again, that's based on the number of kids that eat meals, so we were a little less than and it's also built on student, the number of students setting and the price that we charge and stuff, so we were a little up on that, uh, as far as our revenues, but then again, our expenditures is all, is also down, so you'll notice that across, but I'll take each column separately. The capital, um, we spent a little bit more, but that also includes our, um, health and safety dollars, so in that areas depending on what we need to get corrected, so that's why the difference there. Uh, building construction, that's a new one. That was question number one. Okay, so that's in there. And our debt service, you'll notice it's going down, those dollars go back to the taxpayers. They allow us for our debt, debt service to go up so high the state does, when we hit a certain level that they take money away from that account. They don't want us to continue to build that up, so they did reduce that a little bit this year, that's why that's a deficit. And our trust fund is, is five hundred dollars, you can have that in there forever. Um, that just remains in there, they don't spend it, they spend the interest on it, so that just continues to move forward. So the totals, you've got there, but keep in mind the thirteen million is really eleven million because you have to take the two million off that we had for question number one. So the budgets themselves, um, really aren't that far off from what we, we projected. When we get into the revenue, it's the same thing when you look at the general, um, the general fund with our, our expenditures, you notice that we did spend a little bit more than we, than we projected, but we also received more revenue from those. So they, they do just cross each other out, but the extra money we got went out to those specific things. So we, we expected that our, um, revenue went up in there for specific things, that means our expenditures are also going to go up because we spent them on those specific things we got the dollars for. Okay, uh, food service, again, our revenue was, was down, but then so are expenditures. Uh, community education, um, Matt controls that, it depends on how much he charges, how many classes he has, so that can be, that can be variable. And again, community ed is their own fund, they always keep that in a positive balance. Uh, capital, again, um, we did know that we were in deficit spending, when we get down there, I'll explain that, when we put our capital plan in place, um, for this year, we knew we were going to spend more money than we were going to receive, so that's no surprise to us. Uh, building construction, again, that's new, debt service, again, shows, um, what the revised expenditures were, and then the trust fund remained the same. So then you've got the two things, just again, remember that you've got to take the two million dollars off in order to really have a true reading, because that was an additional funds, um, where we have mentioned that will also zero itself off because those funds will be spent. Any questions on that first part? Okay, if we go down into that next column where it says positive deficit, uh, budget by fund, you'll notice that the revised budget, we went up that, that much in general fund and that was expected on my part, that's how the building was, or the budget was built so that we would increase our, our general fund, um, reserve. Uh, food service, we went up a little bit and again, remember that, uh, the feds also are, are forcing us to raise our price, it's not an option, we have to hit a certain target. Every year we've just been raising it by ten cents, moving towards that target, so they tell us the minimum we have to move towards and we've been taking the minimum, but it, it still is increasing our revenue, uh, and again, food service runs its own fund, uh, we need to keep that in a positive. And last year we had a number of things, I think we had the freezer wall, we had a, a dishwasher wall, both expensive, so it had taken our, our reserve fund for food service down considerably. Uh, capital again, remember that's both, um, both, uh, health and safety and the capital dollars are both in there, um, and it went up a little bit, but again, not in our, our capital that we use for our capital projects, that's down below, and I'll show that. Um, and debt service, again, that goes back to the taxpayers, um, that was a minus fourteen thousand, but we knew that was going, was going to happen. And then trust fund stays, stays the same. So if you go down into the, the last two, where you've got actual fund balance and estimated fund balance, um, from six thirty fourteen to six thirty fifteen, our fund, general fund balance on assignment was a hundred and sixty-six thousand, and now we're up to four hundred and twenty-six thousand. And again, that's not a surprise to me, that was the intent of my budget, is to get that general reserve fund up some. Food service, we increased a little bit, but not much. Um, our community ed, again, increased just a little bit, but not much. Again, capital, health and safety, the really the one that you should look at is, um, where it just says capital only, where it's a hundred and nine thousand, we're down to ninety-three thousand. I knew that was going to happen, we had a lot of needs that we had to do and we, we did deficit spend and now we zeroed it out. And then debt service, again, I've explained in the trust. And I think, and I should explain, the trust is really the eighty-nine thousand, that's what they've kept and they, they usually have spent five hundred dollars each year. And that's kept that trust where it will continue to generate interest, you're just not getting much interest anymore. So questions on this? To tell you the truth, I think we're pretty close overall.
Just one question, I, the building and construction.
Yep.
Um, do we expense that every year and then like rough set we didn't do, because remember we planned that, some of that for five years, do we just kind of put that back?
Well, the debt service itself is for the example, is for, uh, just a piece, the buildings that we purchased, so we're collecting levy from the community every year, that's put into this account. When that account gets so big, the state goes, ah, you don't need that much to pay for the middle school addition, the auditorium, the fitness center. So then they take money out of the account. They always leave enough for that to pay for those building projects, but they don't want it to grow to be a huge thing. When it gets too big, they just reduce the levy for the taxpayers and that's where the reduction is.
Okay, but what I was looking at is number six.
Okay.
Okay, so that was about the levy that we had.
It was the levy that we got.
But some of that was rough that we were going to spend over the next five years?
Yes, uh, that will, over the next five.
Once, once we figure it out and we get started, then will we kind of readjust it? Because that, some of that fund will stay there.
Yeah, some of the fund will remain there in the year, but it will, over the next five years, that two million, thirty thousand will be zeroed out. It'll be gone.
Correct.
Yep. And it, you know, it won't all be gone at the end of this year, we'll, we have a number of projects that we want to get done, but some of it won't get done, some of it we're going to wait till next year to get, get those completed, but in the end, it will all zero. Because again, that's one time line, it's not like that replenishes itself every year.
Okay, this is, uh, the first reading of the revised budget?
Correct, the next, next.
We just kind of stop here and ask if somebody's got other questions on that? Anybody?
At the next meeting, this will come back and I will ask for it to be approved. We'll also be looking at next year's budget as the next meeting also.
Okay, so then let's move to number two, which is review, consider adding additional assistant varsity football coach for the 2015, sixteen school year.
Yeah, Max is going to come down and talk about that. Um, I think the board was made, um, aware of this at the last meeting when the, uh, athletic committee kind of explained what had happened here, athletic committee, Max is just going to be here to kind of go over one more time and answer any questions the board has.
Yeah, so I think April thirtieth or something like that, we had an athletic committee meeting and this was one of the recommendations.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth it was. Additionally was some ninth grade assistant pay being the same as a varsity assistance, which is more of a contractual thing, I think will end up in negotiations more than anything. Um, but, uh, the premise of this was just information, uh, given to the people in the committee, which, um, based on the schools that are in our sub-district, Melrose have an eleven paid coaches, Rockford ten, Holyport nine, Pierce nine, Maple Lake eight, and Eaton Valley Howard Lake and Payne's almost seven. And, uh, reasons as far as the addition for this, um, going into this district, which by the way, we're replaced by the state high school league, we didn't have a choice, this is where they say this is where we belong, that's who we're like in, um, both geography and size. Um, our JV and ninth grade games are now both played on the same day instead of, um, one on Monday and one on Thursday, so before we could share some coaches to do some of those duties and we did, we would, literally, we had coaches that would coach a game on Monday, on Thursday, and then on Friday with varsity, we can't do that anymore because they're playing at the same time. Safety issues, uh, for teaching all of the different positions, um, there's plenty of positions just to coach and practice alone, but to, uh, have one coach responsible for coaching all of these kids, both on offense, defense, lineman, all the different skilled positions within one game is, is, it's not good for the kids. The state high school league also put out new practice regulations regulating the amount of time that we have with the kids at practice in order to safely teach all of the techniques to these kids, we need coaches to do that. Um, we've used numerous volunteers and are thankful for them, we've lost some of them, um, hopefully we can keep some of them, but, um, that's also not consistent, that continuity is not ideal for the program either. Um, and then, and my second year coaching here, we dressed twenty-nine kids, tenth through twelfth grade, and, um, we had to bank for enough kids just to play ninth grade, so we had enough to have a separate ninth grade team. Um, this past year, we dressed forty-seven kids and had sixteen freshmen, so, um, anticipate close to fifty kids, tenth through twelfth, we've had a meeting this spring already, we had, I have not met with the eighth graders yet, but I'm fairly certain we'll have plenty of kids for a ninth grade team, so, um, they, basically the discussion at the athletic committee, um, which voted unanimously to, uh, recommend this to the board, is that based on the numbers and if other sports had the same number increases, we would look at the exact same things, and if football experienced a decrease in numbers, we would look at, at discontinuing the position as well. Um, we've had other positions like a ninth grade softball, ninth grade girls' basketball assistant cross country where the numbers just aren't there, the positions are there if we have the numbers to fill. And so that's basically the information, I don't know if there's any other questions
No, we talked as a committee, we recommended this to the board, leave it up to you. I make a motion that we approve, Mr. Biden, the please recommendation.
Second.
Second, uh, from Randy. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It is reasonable that it's twenty-six to twenty-six kids, when you see all those people standing out there.
Thank you.
And Max, I hate starts, what time?
Out of turn here, but I was in here for my report earlier this week, we have a unique situation, uh, Coach Scoobland said he's, I think he's coached like twenty-seven years and only once in his, uh, coaching career has he ever coached at one location, drove and coached another game at another one. Um, we're in a bind to make up our conference schedule, so we're playing a four o'clock game at Montevideo today, Minnewaska's playing a four o'clock game at Benson and we're playing a varsity only game at about eight o'clock, hopefully seven-thirty if we can get started. Completion of those games, while the teams are driving here to, uh, play a baseball game because we have to for a conference stadium, so, um, after the board meeting there will be a baseball game going on, softball won their first round playoffs, I think it was nineteen to three, um, but they were still playing when I came in.
Minnewaska for softball.
Yep, so they'll be playing in Minnewaska tomorrow, they're now in double elimination, so.
Draft has like some sections.
Yeah, the lights will be on.
Right. We just had two business items, I want to go back to the public, do you have any comments on any of those? Okay, um, personnel.
Uh, just to make sure, all these are the POS program, which is approved to us, so we're, we're putting all these in place, so every, every one of these has to do with the same thing.
Does have to do with the summer?
Yes.
All going to handle the kids in the summer?
Yeah, from June first to, um, September fourth.
Is it unreasonable to, um, have one motion for all five?
I think unless the board sees it or leaves, then that is unique or I think.
Because they're exactly the same and.
Yeah, I, I believe you could.
Whatever, technically we should go through each one, I'd like to come with that, but it doesn't really make a lot of sense.
They're all very similar, the only thing that changes is the number of hours, um, I think the pay is the same for all of them, so it's really just the number of hours that is changing, um, per week, that, that we work. And they do have a sub that's going to come in and replace, but we've not, what, board approvals for subs, it's just going to be, so I did not put that on the agenda.
Okay, so the same pay, it's the same dates, we have five of them, the first one is Jaclyn Gruber, then we have Valerie Miller, then we have Sue Teicher, we have one that has, it's Hasee, correct? Hasee. And, and Mayor.
Just, just to be aware that there are different hours per week for all of those.
Yep. So making a motion to approve the POS program for these individuals. Okay, so we have a motion to approve.
How second?
By Lou, second by ID. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Tell me we don't have exactly the same, the, any of them.
Yes, they're, they're all, the, the program has been outstanding so far.
Then, uh, informational reports, uh, committee education advisory report. Cheryl.
Um, Matt pretty much covered everything, uh, we had our meeting for our last four meetings, uh, Matt pretty much covered everything, I just, um, wanted to bring up a few things for community ed. Uh, summary for 2014, fifteen fiscal year only to April twenty-seventh. Class hours for five thousand, three hundred and four, total students was three thousand and four hundred and sixty-five. Uh, zero to five-year-olds, forty to sixty-five students, sixty seventeen-year-olds, which would be the students, uh, one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven, eighteen to fifty-four year olds, a hundred and fifty-three students, and the fifty-five plus class, five hundred and forty-nine students. And the report that had no age on the application. Uh, great numbers in the low grades, in the, the low ages and the high ages, so covering the community. Uh, total contact hours for that amount of time, that's not complete fiscal year yet, it's a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven of education. And registration for summer is well underway and, um, online registration applying for eight. Uh, fitness test center business was twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one, uh, down with from last year for the same period, but still a great number. And, um, as you saw with hires, our POS program set for summer, um, it's going to be a great experience for the kids, um, but there are about, about fifty-six kids registered, not all full time, but, um, a great surprise for what was projected, wonderful. And it's available all summer until school starts and in the fall, until school starts in the fall, six thirty AM to six PM, and it's for kids entering kindergarten to sixth grade. One to five days a week you can, uh, come or occasional, so it's not something you have to sign up for and be there every day or pay a fee. Um, weekly field trips, it's a really great program.
Yeah, and I should mention during the summer, we are going to close our, our playground, the elementary playground, uh, a couple times during the day so that the POS program can go out there and use, use the playground. Matt is in, uh, is, is currently putting together some signs, so they'll be posted so parents will know, um, we are going to close the gates at that time so that we don't have any interruptions to when people are in the POS program. Um, we will certainly disrupt as little as we can and it will remain consistent throughout
Great. More exciting things happening in the pink school system, isn't that nice? Staff development report, ID.
We got a meeting on the seventh of May. That's what was discussed, um, some staff development opportunities that were coming up in the summer, and we will talk about the next school year, um, talking about maybe partnering up with area, um, schools for some of that staff development. And then also, um, some, there's some openings that are going to be coming in the committee with the staff, so the discussion is sort of how to fill those spots.
I think that was, I, I think we're really looking at some opportunities that Recorey is putting together for multiple districts as far as an opportunity for staff, um, state party there, they, they will have an opportunity even for college credit or for east, uh, just credit for lane changes, so I, I think it's a, it's a really good opportunity for us. So I know, I'll give a couple things to my report, I want to jump in.
Any other comments? Very much, ID. Okay, well then, we are now with our superintendent, Robert Hewitt, his administration report.
Yeah, we've been watching the news, it's been interesting, uh, they did send an ominous bill to the governor today, um, in, in that bill, I think, they were looking at one and a half for the first year, two percent for the second year, uh, the governor vetoed it. So, he's talking, I was listening to the news, uh, before I came to the meeting, he's talking about a special session, I don't know whether they're going to do it, he's talking about a tent. Uh, this could be an interesting session, he, um, has his heels dug in on the early childhood for four-year-olds, uh, neither, um, either house is really in favor of that. I don't know what's going to happen at this time, uh, we could go into a shutdown again, for all I know, but it'll, it'll be interesting, so keep watching. Uh, no news on the calendar because that, and I don't believe it's an ominous bill, so I believe that we will start after, uh, after the other day. Uh, superintendent evaluation, tomorrow I'm going to send you some information, uh, it will, will use the same form that we used last year, I will need a volunteer from the committee to do some tabulations, so if I can get somebody who's willing to have the forms go to and then they tabulate a little bit, um, and then I would like to, if possible, set this up so that we would have the evaluation at the next meeting, if that makes sense. We'll close the meeting at that time, adjourn, come back, reopen, um, the next meeting, I believe probably the board chair will give just a summary of what the evaluation was said and then we'll have that. Uh, have looked at a little bit, uh, the MSBA has come out with a new form, I think for the, uh, superintendent's evaluation, I think it'd be worth looking at, I think we should use the old form for now, there's a few things that we need to do with the new form if we're going to go down that road, so I think we wait on that and use the old form now and then I think we re-look at that after this one's done, if that's all right with the board. Okay, uh, facility meeting tomorrow, seven o'clock in, uh, middle school media center.
Thursday.
Or, that's right, Wednesday, Thursday, thank you. So Thursday at, um, seven o'clock in, uh, middle school media center. Uh, had a meeting with, uh, head of food service for Recorey stuff, I mentioned to the board that she'd come in and kind of looked at our program, we had a meeting with principals and the head cooks today, kind of talked about some things that we could look at, possibly changing, doing that, uh, there was also a couple programs that we want to put in place that we haven't done, we're going to meet with all of food service, um, Penny is the, the head of food service for Recorey, all these, she's going to meet with food service at the beginning of the year for about an hour, just go through some things that they need, but there's also an opportunity that Recorey puts on for multiple districts on food service, there will be an addition to our budget, I'm going to build that into our budget for next year, I think it's important to continue to work with our food service, just like our teachers and everybody else to continue to improve and provide our students and our community with the best possible program, so we're looking at also adding, it's about a day workshop, Penny says it's really a great one for them. And then we'll from there. So we're looking at also adding this Bonner Day workshop. Kenny says it's really a great one for them. And then we'll from there. Had a great FFA banquet on Sunday and an honors student banquet. Both were just outstanding, fantastic, really nice to see the kids do what they do. I will pass this around. I did accept it on the part of the board at the FFA meeting, but I'll just pass this around, which is out of appreciation from the FFA to the school board for supporting the program. Let's see, not that anybody's counting that, but I think we're down to six days now. All right, that's what students, staff still have, an additional day for getting grades and closing things down. And then once they're done, we have a lot of projects that we have going, so it'll be a busy summer for us. It'll be difficult to get into the building for staff, just because we're gonna be doing just one every floor with tile, which will be a little bit of a hindrance, but I think in the end will be great for the district. Graduation on Sunday, the 31st, right, so just certainly put that on your agenda. Love to have the whole board there. I did put something in your packet that's taped to your board, so make sure you look there if you haven't seen. Couple fundraisers. I'm not very good at bringing these, so when I get them, I put them on the file, and I forget to bring them to board meeting. Just be aware that the Bandad, the Food, and Spring Blue Flowers and Garden fundraiser, and then they had a profit of $2,983.95. And we also do a book fair, and that was done way back in December, but just to let you know, they break even on the sales, and then they get money for free books, and they got $350 worth of free books during that time. Got that. I do have, finally, the setup so that you can watch the baseball thing. I think it'd be great, not too much for you, as may have already seen, but I think for the community, when Mr. Scoobland, the baseball coach, showed people the stadium. I kind of picked the one that was more personal, that's the first one that he picked, and that's what I'm gonna show. So if the board would mind, about eight minutes, say aye, would move out, and if John, you would mind, just play it off.
Yeah, very well.
No, I think that, yeah, either way's fine, I think. You guys will be either so or.
No.
Yeah, he's, well, we're not spending more, building that budget, building that budget, remember? Here we go. Yeah, please tell me if it's all in works or something. Otherwise, I'm really gonna give up on this.
We've been in the woods for approximately five years. We have received the family of Grant and Chris Stanley, Bruce Stanley, and there's many other pink little fans. I've done a tremendous amount of work to make this project possible. Because we're going into the ballpark here, this is one of the areas, this is a storm shelter, and we also can use this for pitchers throwing and for batting practice, wet cages set on rubber decks, ball racks, all that sort of thing. This is what happened, a storm shelter. And we have, I'll keep coming out now to be able to use pitchers to be able to throw in here. As we're heading to this, we have bathrooms. We have five stalls for women, this is the men's. Now I'm gonna change right here for the block, emphasizing baseball now. Over here, we also have an area for the storm shelter, and this area possibly could be used for a batting cage also. So a nice area we are moving, and that will be used in the summertime for severe weather. Avon, I believe, did the concrete work here, precast. Originally, it was supposed to be just a gray brick, and some people on the Canadian Canadian and some others came up with this idea, and a really just old ballpark type of theme that we went with. We will be having some landscaping done here, a lot of lots that are gonna come up, coming in for that's being done for this rain here. Down the drain way over here for the storm shelter. We thought, well, this room ran out of fuel. There's now, this is kind of the start of the project, three years ago, the public journal. The idea for the fans, to make sure that there's most of the action is possible, everyone to have access, we're all looking through fans. As a coach and as a fan, I hate looking through pants, and that's one of the things that is why we put the brooms up. Bruce. Stanley and Chris Stanley, these are two of the key guys that got this project going. They're the brains behind the outfit here. They've done a lot of work, they're kind of leaders of our whole baseball community possible. Right here's a lower area, possible, which is possible, right here, we have a hole, but I, we're gonna come. See, I just thought it was made in Madison, Mark, right here, we gave it the old wood look. Wood for the nature. We rent this off, rented it from him, and it was really turned off super. Bruce Stanley was the guy that did the pearl thing, Bruce did that, along with Chris Stanley, who's given a great job of the brickwork. We might have a special square type of netting here, so you can see through it pretty easily. If you go out in the parking lot, you can park here. God, you can't even see that we have netting here. We put a concession stand right in access, so you can see this, this is for my wife. She would, once in a while, get upset where she'd come see the game because the concession stand was concealed behind the dugout. So all concession workers, and sometimes it gets hard to find concession workers, and usually it's moms or parents, so we wanted the concession stand to have full view of the ballpark. It turned out special, and also fans can hear who wants to game at the same time, where they don't miss any action. Over here, we have the announcing scoreboard operations. This is Brett Bond, he's our scoreboard operator, he's helped us all for many years. Roger Biafer right here, here's our announcer back over here. Here's the original, this was made, Bill has his son Tanner Adams made this. This was the original, facilities, not the grass down, and several majors. We had, there's our old concession stand, and we have the public restroom, so a couple of low beds. This was the original design, as you can see, it was a great block, but we changed it, went with a more holder style ballpark type appearance with the bronze, the light brown, and the dark brown for featured for coloring and that sort of thing. Colin, Gretchen Melfell, and the house, my wife Carrie still did a great job on that. One of the things, we started off with this facility years ago, and this was many, many years ago, back in the mid 80s, later 80s. My wife sold Pop out of a cooler with a blue tarp over here, and that was the start, made up tires donating her time, and made $764, and that was the start. And our field was not in great shape, and it's just a beautiful project, and I can't thank enough people for all the help with this. That's my, our athletic director was helping me at 6:30 this morning. Right here, yeah, so this is our plaza area. We think this is probably gonna be the most popular viewing spot. It's gonna be a great viewing area. We had powder cup, our tables made, so people can put their food and beverage. We went with the baseball theme, we have the shop class, Mr. Cops, your shop class, and the stands, and Kelly Whalers, and we're with the baseball. Tables. The plaza area right there is a great view on the ballpark, and yet a lot of the areas and fans wouldn't have to look through on netting or that. Also, Matt, not very, you noticed there's a curtain, it was Bruce, and William Shine, and another contractor, Ruff on Ladders, for the angle, the roof, for sunlight, for seeing the flying fly balls, the bats, and the people around it. Pits in, perhaps, in different angles to make sure that you can keep the sunlight down, also make sure that fans can see fly balls. We also designed it so that the kids can just run down some paint. View is not blocked by any pillars and walls that happen in ballpark. We're really trying to be a fan of running with the ballpark. As we're walking this way, we have the Flaves over here. Aaron Prans and Flave told country, excellent job with the Flaves over there. Carrie does a wonderful job in the paint, almost around here, putting this up the other day. One of the things, too, I forgot to mention, of the whole, I guess, of all the donors. We had Steve Ramble, who was one of the people that came in and said that, you know, if you're gonna ask for money for donations, make sure you ask for quite a bit of money. Ask for $25,000 instead of $1,000 or $500 to get yourself going. Because you can't come back to donors and ask for more, because they've already given money, so it was great help, Mr. Ramble with that. Over here is a lot, and all handicap accessible, here's another viewing area for people who want to look at the stadium. We also have the burn that's not quite completed. As you can see, it comes off very close. We don't have a lot of fall territory down the ballpark. And we're gonna get a lot of long chairs and wings on the side, so it's close to the action, and so it's easy for people to see home plate and the pictures. We have the fall poles, great spanners, man, you're running, made a great job with the fall park. We wanted a couple of fall poles, I believe they're 24 feet high. We really looked into what's the best opportunity for fans to see the game of baseball, and that's what we kind of went with with our ideas. On the field itself, we filled in the baselines. We're trying to see how it's gonna go with the grass baselines. Some colleges, Paul Blanchard down the south west, Dave Longton, we thought we'd try and see how it goes with baselines filled in with grass. So far, it's been really good, made it free, but the next time, well, the cloudy overcast, hopefully doesn't bring them terribly. After the ballpark, we put in the slats and the fence. Bill has did a great job with the backstop back there, or I should say the batter's line. We went with the yellow cone to kind of close it in. We have the corporate sponsors, some of the sponsors, they have donated to school projects, and they'll take the ballpark out there on the fence, and they've done a great job with that. I gotta wrap it up, and I sure enjoyed having Rand Milton cover me these years as a Wilmer paper. Go Bulldogs!
That's what I have. This video is on in the Wilmer Paper video section, so you can go to the Wilmer Paper's website and pull this up if you want to see it again. I think channel five. Who did one on that one?
Max.
Max?
Yeah, it was WCCO.
WCCO, so they've also done a nice article on this in the video, and so you can go to that website and find that also. If you haven't been out there, the burns look a lot different, and the acid's going well. And there is a game tonight.
Okay, does anyone have anything else? Any comments from the board on anything? It was fascinating, really exciting about the POS. We, Bob and I have talked about that, that it'd be nice that we hear things that are not in the school system that we don't normally hear about. The people that are watching us from at home don't always know all the really exciting things that went on. It's like, sometimes in the school system, it's kind of like a secret. Everybody here knows what's going on, but nobody else does. We need to tell people about it, and so maybe the POS, even though it probably wasn't necessarily intended to be that way, but between General Reapart and people that we have, I think that comes off to be a positive.
Yeah, you know, they've tried this before, and it wasn't real successful, and this year it has been just outstanding for the services that the POS program has provided.
Good. Bob, if there's nothing else, entertain the motion to have a motion from Lou. I'll make the second. Any further discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Those say no. Thank you.